I will call the meeting to order. This is the 34th meeting of the Maryland City Council Meeting in Regular Session on Monday, July 8, 2019. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Mo.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ralph, would you please call the roll?
Mr. DeWalt?
Here.
Mr. Sidnor?
Here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Les?
Here.
President Smalls?
Here.
Mayor Mo.
Agenda item two is approval of the minutes, council. I'll ask for your approval of the minutes for the 32nd meeting of the Maryland City Council on May 29, 2019, if there are no changes.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Les. There, second.
Second, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Ralph, please call the roll.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas? President Smalls?
I vote yes. Agenda item three is a report of the Maryland City Council, and tonight we will start with Councilman DeWalt.
Good evening, everyone. On June 30, I attended the, it was the yearly awards picnic for the Police Department out at in West Laurel Community Center. It was, it was a very nice event, and a lot of crabs, which I'm not a big crab person, but they were very, very good. And it was a shame that the event started at 2:00, and at 2:15, there was a shooting down at Stewart Manor. So that probably cut down on the police personnel at the event, which I know they would have enjoyed it, but I guess it ended up being a homicide. Let's see. Also, on Monday, July 1, I attended the Friends of Patuxent River Meeting down at Avondale Park. We were supposed to meet at Sip's, Sip, but they were closed, so we went down to the park. So we got to enjoy some nature down there, and we had a very, very productive meeting. And the originators of the meeting are Mike McLaughlin and Brian Coyle, which are absolute fabulous guys with the environment, with nature, things like that. They're very, very educated on it, and everything that they say is an educational thing that I don't know. They recognize birds, they recognize everything in the forest, which is really, really cool that we're surrounded by people like that. Tomorrow is a meeting at the Prince George's County Council for a resolution that Patuxent Greens is attempting to revise a 2008 water and sewage plan down at the Patuxent for their development. And the meeting starts at 10:00 a.m. at the Prince George's County Administrative Building, and the public is welcome. They're welcome to speak, and anybody that wants to give their opposition to this development at Patuxent Green is more than welcome to come. And that's about it.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Councilman Sidnor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On June 13, I attended a Public Safety and Transportation Committee meeting here held at City Hall. Also, I want to thank the mayor again for signing the proclamation for June 19. I think next year, we should try to celebrate it a little differently, but we'll talk about that if we all still sit here next year. Also, we attended a conference up in Ocean City. Now, that was a very informative conference. Thank the city for allowing us to go. On June 27, I attended a job fair, but I wasn't looking for a job for myself. I was basically going to recruit some recruiters, and I talked to 13 recruiters that'd be interested in coming to the next job fair that we have here in Laurel. Also, I attended a meeting held at Laurel High School, a community meeting that was looking for input from the community. As you know, Principal Jones retired, and the community's out there, the school board's out there, taking questions and things from the community. So I attended that meeting. Also, on June 30, I attended a war ceremony here at City Hall recognizing the police officer. Also, I want to thank the other police officers who did not receive an award, but want to thank you for your service as well. And that concludes my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. Councilwoman Nicholas?
Good evening, everyone. I also attended the MML Conference. It was really good to see that it's on everybody's radar about the opioid epidemic. There was a lot of great sessions and a lot of conversation around that, so it's good to see that people are getting more involved and wanting to do something about that problem. I also attended Mel Franklin, who's the county councilman at large, town hall meeting that was at the Laurel Library. It was pretty well attended, and he really raised some very good points, so let's see what action will come behind that. I also want to thank all of the departments that were involved for the 4th of July celebration. It was wonderful. It was really, really hot. So I will just say thank you for everyone who was involved, and stay hydrated, definitely. Water, because of these high temperatures, I always say that our health is our wealth, but you see a lot of people in the emergency room that because they're not drinking enough water, one bottle is not enough, and when it's 90 degrees and higher, eight, eight ounces of water is not enough. You need to double that, because I really got overheated at the parade, and I had to get in the truck. And I really, I'm a person that drinks a lot of water, so I just can't stress enough, as I always do at each meeting, to please say with these temperatures, please drink water. Soda and juice don't count. It has to be H2O. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nicholas, Councilman Les.
Hey, Mr. President. As indicated, we were down at Ocean City for the Maryland Municipal League Meetings. In addition to the sessions that were held, very informative sessions by people that know what they're talking about, there was over 200 vendors there. And this year, they didn't have enough spaces for all of them. And they like the Maryland Municipal League Conference because it's only a day and a half. The vendors like it. But I got a lot of good information. I'm sure I'm on a bunch of mailing lists now. And it is a, it's investment in understanding what's going on around the state with other municipalities and what's out there that we might someday see in the city as far as vendor products. We always, as was already mentioned, the Laurel for the River had their meeting. I left that meeting and went to Mel's meeting, Franklin's meeting, because I wanted to hear what he had to say about the new high school. The new high school will have, according to him, 2,500 students. This is the one time that Tom DiNoga and I agree that it's too large for a high school. Tom's position has been for years that 1,500 is the right size. I came from a high school that had 1,500 students, and we had a female principal that retired the year that I graduated, because she said they were going to get another 500 students, and you could not run a high school with that many young people. Let me just say it that way. You know what? I think she's right. But the other part of this is the original cost estimate was $210 million. It's a lot of money, and they keep redesigning these schools time after time after time. They don't have a set, a set of plans. It's a stock set of plans. This is how you need to lay the high school out. Let's save 10% on the engineering fees. They don't have it. So again, Mel did a good job presenting. He brought up some other issues. We appreciate him coming to Laurel. Of course, the parade and fireworks. Parade went off well. My grandson thanks the mayor for making sure the fireworks went off in the rain. He got wet, I got wet, and he watched every one of them till the end. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to mention one other thing. This week, they dedicated the Independent Verification and Validation Lab for NASA in Fairmont, West Virginia. And it was dedicated to Catherine Johnson, and she was one of the three black women that were the stars of Hidden Figures. And what they used to call them back then, it was interesting, they called them computers. Those women in that section were called computers, and they didn't have computers yet. But one of those women actually became the director of their computing center. I was very lucky when I went to Delaware State College to have a department head, Dr. Williams. Her whole life was educating people. She was one of the finest black women I ever met. And she taught me to be inquisitive and to understand what the end game was, and I learned a lot about chemistry from her. So congratulations to Catherine Johnson's family on the dedication of that center. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Les. For the sake of brevity, I'll just mention that I attended a number of the events that my colleagues did, but I want to particularly thank our 4th of July Committee for putting off a really good fireworks display despite working in rather adverse conditions with the rain and the on-again, off-again number of people who were there participating and observing the fireworks. I stood out in the rain like a number of others and got wet for the first time in a number of years. My wife also attended, and it just happened to be a rainy night, and, you know, I heard a little complaining here or there about her getting wet. But all in all, it was a great event, and traffic wasn't nearly as bad as I've experienced leaving the field as I have in past years. So again, I just want to thank the 4th of July Committee for putting on a great show. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple condolences to the family and friends of Maryland Comptroller Peter Franchio on the passing of his father, Douglas Franchio. Also, to, I learned this evening that Walter Ortell, longtime Laurel resident, passed away as well, and again, offer condolences to Councilman DeWalt, letting him know we stand ready to assist if need be asked. The, did have the opportunity to attend the grand opening of Footage Society on Washington Boulevard. If you haven't been in there, I suggest you take a look if you're looking for tennis shoes in particular. Also, we were invited to attend the Arthritis and Pain Associates of Prince George's County, which is up at the medical facility across from the hospital. It's their second annual ice cream social of the Police Department, and I think many of our staff attended that as well. And then we also had another ice cream social tour, which was from W GTS 91.9. They had a contest. They've been moving to other municipalities and counties. Apparently Laurel got like 34,000 votes for them to attend. We worked with them, and very nice event and well-attended down at the Laurel Lakes. You've already heard and talked about the MML Summer Conference, and then I want to acknowledge and thank the volunteers of the July 4 Committee for all the work that they've done and they continue to do, also to the city staff and to the residents. It was a tough year. It was a tough celebration this year. Some decisions had to be made regarding the weather. It's not easy to be able to suspend the fireworks and then try to do them another day or a week. There's a lot of things that have to be looked at, and the committee worked with the city on that. We appreciate that. Again, well-attended, and the show, I think, is still one of the best. Just a couple now. Actually, let me also congratulate our councilwoman Valerie Nicholas for her award from the, and I forgot the name of the award.
Josie King Hero Award.
Josie King Hero Award from UMS, and want to congratulate her, and we put out a nice press release. Well deserved, so congratulations. Just a couple announcements, Mr. President. July the 13, from 1:00 to 6:00, will be splashed down at the Laurel Municipal Pool. And then on July the 17, from 6:30 to 8:00, we'll have a city hall in the park at the Wellington Pool and Park there in the subdivision of Wellington. And I do have a couple proclamations that will go down. Steve, why don't you come up, and we'll do yours first, and then we'll do the summer
Thank you again, Mayor, President, and council members. At this time, I'd like to invite my guests up. Stand up here with me, please. I want to round here, gentlemen. First, I want to introduce Saheed Hassan. He is the president and executive director of the Islamic Community Center of Laurel, and with him is Heather Cadre. He's the chairman and the board of director of the Islamic Community Center of Laurel. And the other gentleman in the back who's taking pictures is Darryl Small. Just real fast, the city has been for almost two years now involved in a resiliency program, and this program basically is to prepare the city's citizens to be able to stand on our own two feet for 72 hours during a disaster. A main goal of this program is to use community organizations and our faith-based organizations to play a part with the city in helping the community survive these disasters. Probably over a year ago, we started discussions with the folks at the Islamic Center, and they were very much interested in helping us with this program. We assigned a memorandum of understanding in June to where there are going to be a point of distribution and also a community resilient, a community resource center for the city to distribute water and prepackaged meals in case of a disaster. They are an integral part of the city's emergency management plan and the resiliency program. The first group that was part of our resiliency program was the First Baptist Church folks, and these are the second folks that stood up and said they want to help the community. It's a, it's a great milestone for the city, and I want to thank these gentlemen and their congregation very much for being part of the community. It's critical that the faith-based organizations and people will go to them before they really come to a governmental agency for assistance during the disasters, and it's with gentlemen like this and their congregation that's stepping forward and saying, we want to help the community. We want to be a part of the community, and we appreciate it very much. And with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Steve. Let me also acknowledge the work that Steve's been doing with his outreach as well. I have a mayoral citation says to the Islamic Community Center of Laurel in recognition and appreciation of your partnership with the City of Laurel to provide city residents with critical services during a disaster for the City of Laurel Resiliency Program. It's signed by me on today's date. I also have one of our City of Laurel pens with the key to the city. I want to tell you all the key opens no doors and does not get you out of any trouble, so do not get in trouble. Congratulations.
As you introduced Mr. Stephen here, Heather Cadre, the chairman of the Islamic Community Center of Laurel. I just want to say on behalf of the ICCL and their members, we're excited to be a part of this program. Our faith also teaches us to help neighbors as best we can. We're sitting if our neighbor is hungry, and we're, you know, we have a plate full of food, so we want to make sure that we help out our community members as best we can, especially in the times of need. So thank you again, Mayor and the City of Laurel.
I don't want to take up too much time, but just to give a little quick background, when Hurricane Irma hit in Florida Key West back in September 2017, a good friend of mine who had a lot of family and friends in Key West came to me and said that his friends are telling him that they're having a really hard time getting disaster relief over there just because of the large impact of the hurricane. So what we did together is we rented a 32-foot big box truck, and we took it to the ICCL, the Islamic Community Center of Laurel, our community. We sent out some emails, made some announcements, and told them that we need to collect supplies to send down to Key West. And these guys weren't looking for water and food. They were looking for shovels and rags and flashlights so they could rebuild their community. So within a matter of two days, we filled up that truck, and my friend personally drove that truck all the way down to Key West. And when he came back, he told me, he said, you have no idea how much they appreciated that down there. They emptied out that truck in minutes, and they all got to work. And they were very surprised that a small mosque in Laurel, Maryland, you know, thought about them and sent all that, all those supplies down to them so that they can rebuild. And a couple months after that, I became the president of ICCL, and one of the first things I did was set up a meeting with Mayor Mo, and I told him about this effort as well as some other efforts that we had going on. And I asked him, I said, what can I do, you know, what can we do as a community on a local scale, you know, to provide relief to others? And he said, you know, your timing couldn't be better because we're getting started on this resiliency program for a local disaster relief. And that's when he set me up with Mr. Darryl Smalls, and we've been meeting, and we came a long way, and now we're here today. So we really appreciate it. You know, I know you guys are recognizing our contribution, but as Heather mentioned, you know, it's very, it's very important in our religion, first comes God, then take care of your family, and then be good to your neighbor. But we also want to recognize Mayor Mo and his staff for giving us the opportunity to be good to our community. Thank you.
So again, thank you all very much. Thank you for what you do in the community, and keep an eye out, because they do a lot of different community events where they want to get more of the community involved and know what's happening. Come on, you come on.
Real quick, on Saturday, July 20, we're having our annual picnic, which is open to the entire community. We want you all to come and attend. It's 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's our biggest social event of the year on the grounds at ICCL on Conti Road, 7306 Conti Road, and it's free food for everybody. Thank you.
They'll all be there. Thank you all again. Second proclamation I have is 2019-13. Whereas summer reading helps kids and teens avoid what is known as the summer slide, when school and school is out and students may lose many of their educational achievements made during the school year, and whereas research shows that children who read six or more books over the summer gain more in reading ability than children who do not. And whereas reading over the summer months helps children and teens maintain their literacy skills and prepares them to return to school ready to learn, and whereas the City of Laurel Education Advisory Committee created a summer reading campaign subcommittee to discuss rising awareness, raising awareness and promoting summer reading programs throughout the City of Laurel. And whereas the Educational Advisory Committee and the city staff have been working together as recommended by the Summer Reading Campaign Subcommittee on Outreach Efforts to encourage all students to continue reading throughout the summer. Now therefore, I pray, I pray the mayor of the City of Laurel do hereby proclaim the City of Laurel, City of Laurel became July and August 2019 as summer reading months in the City of Laurel, and call upon all citizens to grab a book and read it this summer. I better start reading my books. Sabrina Epps is the vice chair, and Sabrina, you want to come up and accept this, and if you want to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll call Councilmember Sidnor. Councilmember Sidnor, as you know, is also a member of the Education Advisory Committee, and it was absolutely our pleasure to come together back in April, which was our first meeting as the school year was going to be concluding very soon. And as we tried to figure out, you know, how to get our work started, it became really clear that the summer slide is that clear and present issue that faces many of our students in our community. And so, you know, one of the things that Prince George's County in general and Laurel in particular are very blessed with is an amazing library and wonderful historical society and lots of opportunities for learning and reading and engagement over the summer for our students. And even in our cafes on Main Street, you'll see books and books everywhere, and they're actually everywhere we go. All we have to do is just look. And so, as you are, as you're talking with young people this summer and even engaging in your own reading, it's a way that we can embrace all of our students and get behind them and let them know that we support them in terms of the acquisition of their new knowledge as well as the curation and generation of their creativity over the summer. And what better way to do that than to allow your imagination to run wild while you read a book? And so, we're thankful and grateful to the mayor and the city council and the city at large, as well as the Laurel Library, for embarking on this, this initial engagement on behalf of our students. So thank you.
And the little libraries around? Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, Bid Recommendation for Hazard Mitigation Services. I guess Mr. Allen's outside.
Mr. President, I believe it's a public hearing, a general public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right, Kim. That gives him a few more minutes outside. Agenda Item Four is a public hearing. I will remind folks that members of the public are asked to sign the speaker list, which I have here now in front of me. Council president calls the speakers from the sign-in sheet. Each speaker is asked to give their name and address for the record. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Because I have no one signed up to speak for the general public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? For Agenda Item Seven, C. Agenda Item Seven, C? Yes. We're just doing the general public hearing. I'll call you when, yes, when I get to that particular agenda item. Okay. Seeing no one for the general public hearing, I will close the general public hearing at Agenda Item Six is the Recommendation for Hazard Mitigation Services.
Thank you again, Mr. President, Mayor, and council members. There again, nothing different. I ask for your consideration and approval of providing a contract for our community rating system program and also for our certified floodplain manager reviews to Frank McComb Incorporated LLC. Like I said during the work session, they have been with us for two years, and have been performing very well, and this will just continue their services.
Thank you, council. As Mr. Allen mentioned, this agenda item was discussed at our work session earlier today. It was your pleasure. President, I move for approval. Thank you, Councilman Les. There, second?
I second, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda Item Seven... Agenda Item 7A, Third Public Hearing with Possible Action on Resolution Number 7-19, A Resolution to Set the Polling Place Dates and Times for Early Voting in the City of Laurel for the General Election on Tuesday, November 5, 2019. I've read the title into the record for the third reading. I'll open the public hearing at 6:32. Have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item? Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 6:32. Council, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, before I cast a vote, can I make a statement?
Please.
During one of the work sessions, I asked could early voting be put at 7901 Cypress Street because we always heard early voting at here at City Hall. Any reason why it can't be held at Cypress Street this year?
I'll turn to the administration. Mayor?
Well, I think with, with the early voting, what we've tried to do is put it, I guess, in the middle of the city somewhat. The municipal building, everyone knows where it's at, it's adequate parking, it's facilities for, you know, accessibility issues. And it really had nothing to do with Ward 1 or Ward 2. It was all about trying to open up and allow people some time for early voting is what we've, is what we've done. I think at the 7901, there were some issues over there even when Election Day is there. But again, it really is not about Ward 1 or Ward 2. It was to try to let people know. People seem to know where the facility is, and I would hate to see us confuse it by trying to do a move this, this late in the year.
President Smalls, can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
As we progress further and further and further out towards Conti Road, Conterra, I know there's a lot of residents out there, and there's probably a lot of people out there that don't even know where City Hall is. The, the structure on Cypress Street is, I think, well-known over in that area. It's around several shopping centers. We are on the northern end. City Hall is on the northern end of the city. And I would agree with, if it's not going to be any other financial burdens or anything on the early voting that we can't budget, I would agree with Mr. Councilmember Sidnor on holding the early voting at both places. It actually does get a little crowded here at City Hall during early voting, and you don't really know who to go up to because people from Ward 1 are coming here and voting for, they can't vote for Ward, I mean, people from Ward 2 are coming up here and they can't vote for Ward 1 anyway. So it's a lot of extra energy and things and a lot of crowding up here, and I believe we should move it there.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Any other discussion?
Let me make sure I'm clear. You're now asking for two locations, not one. Is that what?
I was asking, I was asking to be one location that I talked to the clerk before, and every time we had early voting, it was always at here, City Hall.
Right.
And I was just wanting to know why sometimes we can't switch it up. Because, you know, we only have one, we have two general elections. We had a general election, we had two polling places, I know, in November. I understand what you were saying, Mr. Mayor, and then, but I think if we plan it in advance, give people enough notice, it could be, you know, there in Ward 2 sometime. But I'm not opposing it today that, you know, be held at Ward 1, but I'd just like to know in the future sometimes that we should take Ward 2 in consideration as well. We give folks enough notice that it'll be there every other year, whenever time, you know. So I think that's only, it makes sense to me. I don't know if it makes sense to any other council members, but I think it's a discussion we should have for the next election.
No, I, I understand. I just kept hearing two different places, which there is a financial piece if you add to. I wasn't sure what you were asking for, and then Councilman DeWalt said both places. The other issue is, right now, I'm not opposed to anywhere. You put it anywhere you want. We just, years ago, I guess it's been eight, 10 years that we started the early voting somewhere in that area. It was decided to pick City Hall. It's really up to the council where they want to do their early voting. The administration will work with wherever you want. The issue that I have now is that it may be very late. The center itself over there is, there are programs that go on. So there are things like that that we would have to shift or try to shift. I would just propose that you may want to try to take this up sooner rather than later. I think it's a little late now. Plus, I don't believe the Board of Elections Supervisors has even discussed or had the, you know, opportunity to respond to this as well. So we'll work with, counsel with whatever they want.
Any other discussion? Ms. Raoul? I'll entertain a motion, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I move to approve Ordnance Number 1944. I'm sorry. Thank you. With resolution, and I'll ask that after the election, Board of Elections Supervisors take this issue up. Does it see what, make good business in the city? That's my motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Les. We have the motions. There's a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Raoul, please call a roll.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
I vote yes. But like I said earlier, just for next election, just take consideration of changing to another location just to be, you know, give other people in the city a chance to vote early election in their ward as well. Thank you.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Moe?
I'll concur, and I'll, again, well, if you'd send me any information you have, we'll make sure we discuss it as well internally. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Agenda Item 7B is a Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 1944, Text Amendment Number 254. An ordinance to amend the City of Laurel, Maryland Unified Land Development Code, Chapter 20, Article 1, Zoning, Division 1. Definitions, Section 20-1.7 and Division 9. Exceptions and Supplements to Regulations, Section 20-20.5. Fences and Walls to Allow Electric Security Fences in the Industrial Zone IG and Industrial Commercial Services ICS Zones of the City of Laurel, Maryland and Provide an Effective Date. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 6:40. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak? I see someone ready to speak.
Good evening, Mr. President. I'll just do the read file for the Mayor City Council. Text Amendment Application Number 254, Ordinance Number 1944, was filed on March 29, 2019 to the Mayor City Council of Laurel to amend the Laurel Unified Land Development Code, Chapter 20, Division 1. Definitions, Section 20-1.7 and Division 9. Exceptions and Supplements to Regulations, Section 20-20.5. Fences and Walls to Permit Electric Security Fences Within the Industrial, General and Industrial Commercial Services Zones. On May 9, 2019, the proposed ordinance was sent to the Maryland Department of Planning for comment. The department received no comment. The file contains a certificate of publication verifying that this application in public hearing was advertised as required by law in the June 20th, June 27th, and July 4th editions of the Prince George's Sentinel. A memorandum from the City of Laurel Planning Commission to the Mayor City Council dated June 12, 2019 reads as follows. At their regular meeting on June 11, 2019, the City of Laurel Planning Commission considered text amendment number 254 to allow electric security fences within the industrial, general and industrial commercial services zones. A motion made by Ms. Bonner, seconded by Mr. Wilson, with Mr. Welford abstaining from the vote, Mr. Kish voting yes, and Chairwoman Bettman casting the final vote of yes, the Planning Commission recommended that the Mayor City Council approve text amendment application 254 as presented in the proposed ordinance. That concludes the reading of the file, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Pulley. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 6:42. What's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. President, make a motion to approve Ordinance 1944, Amendment 254.
Thank you. Councilman Sidnor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Raoul, please call a roll.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Moe?
I feel like this ordinance has been around for five years. I'm just glad we're here. I'll concur. Thank you, Mr. President.
Agenda Item 7C, Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 1945, Text Amendment Number 255. An ordinance to amend the City of Laurel, Maryland Unified Land Development Code, Chapter 20, Land Development and Subdivision, Article 1, Zoning, Division 1. Definitions, Section 20-1.7. Division 6, Parking and Loading Facilities, Section 20-16.10. Division 14, Design Guidelines for Historic District Commission, Section 20-26.15. Driveways and Parking Pads and Providing an Effective Date. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 6:44. Mr. Le.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Mayor, and Councilmembers. Text Amendment Application 255 dash...
Hold that mic closer.
Sorry. 255, Ordinance Number 1945, was filed on May 8, 2019 by city staff to the Mayor and City Council of Laurel to amend the City of Laurel, Maryland Unified Land Development Code, Chapter 20, Land Development and Subdivision, Article 1, Division 1. Definitions, Section 20-1.7. Division 6, Parking and Loading Facilities, Section 20-16.10. And Division 14, Design Guidelines for Historic District Commission, Section 20-26.15. Driveways and Parking Pads and Providing an Effective Date. On May 22, 2019, the proposed ordinance was sent to the Maryland Department of Planning for comment, and the MDP had no comment. Yes. The file contains a certificate of publication verifying that this application in public hearing was advertised as required by law in the June 20th, June 27th, and July 4th editions of the Prince George's Sentinel. The proposed text amendment 255 is to allow for new paving requirements for the parking areas and access driveways within the city and to create definitions for impervious surface and pervious surface. An impervious surface would be defined as a surface that includes but is not limited to concrete, asphalt, pavers, brick, and all paved and prepared drivable surfaces pursuant to Section 20-16.10 of the City of Laurel Unified Land Development Code. A pervious surface would be defined as a surface that allows precipitation to infiltrate directly into the ground pursuant to Section 20-16.10 of the City of Laurel Unified Development Code and 18-166.2 of the Laurel City Code. Text Amendment Application 255, Ordinance 1945 would also establish that driveway shall be improved with an impervious surface or another pervious surface which the Department of Economic and Community Development determines is acceptable and in conformance with the intent of Chapter 20-16.10 of the Unified Land Development Code. Also, within the Design Guidelines for the Historic District Commission in Section 20-26.15, that parking areas and driveways shall be improved with an impervious surface or other pervious material which the Historic District Commission determines is acceptable and in conformance with the intent of this chapter in accordance with the standards established in subdivision regulations, building code, and any other city regulations or standard. The use of gravel on parking areas and access driveways installed after January 1, 2020 is prohibited. A memorandum from the City of Laurel Planning Commission to the Mayor City Council dated June 12, 2019 reads as follows. At the, at the regular meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission held on June 11, 2019, the following action was taken on the subject zoning application. Mr. Wilson made a motion to recommend approval of text amendment 255 with proposed changes to the draft ordinance to add a pervious surface definition in Section 20-1.17. Division 1 Definitions, amend the start date from July 8, 2019 to January 1, 2020, and to add wording pervious to Section 20-16.10, Division 6 Parking Area Improvements of the Laurel City Code, and also to Section 20-26.15, Design Guidelines for Historic District Commission. Ms. Bonner seconded Mr. Wilson's motion. Mr. Welford voted yes, and Mr. Kish voted yes, and Chairwoman Bettman cast the final vote of yes. That concludes the reading of the file, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Le. We have Ms. Cheryl Dyer speak on this agenda item. Ms. Dyer, as you come forward, would you give your name and address for the record, please?
Cheryl Dyer.
Button down below, show it to me. Don't turn screen.
Thank you. I'm Cheryl Dyer. I live at 310 Fourth Street, where I have lived for the past 40-plus years, but I've only just now been educating myself about our choices and what effect they have on the environment, specifically the Patuxent River. I, I think Ms. Raoul passed out to you an article from the Washington Post that was in the paper last week, and it, it's got a lot of information. I'd just like to point out a few highlights. It, it tells the cost, the lifespan, and the environmental impact of certain materials that people could use to redo their driveways. Asphalt is the least environmentally friendly because it's a petroleum product. It also has a short lifespan, 12 to 20 years. Concrete is the second worst for the environment. It is impervious or impermeable, and water runs off of it, which makes it a great building material, but a poor choice for driveways. One of the other reasons it's bad is because one of its main components is cement. That's a big contributor to CO2 emissions, and it also has significant volatile organic compounds that are released. Its lifespan is 25 to 50 years. The better choice would be gravel. It's not only a lot cheaper, but it's got the second lowest impact on the environment. The best would be seashells, but that's only for people who live near the source, and sadly we don't. Gravel is porous. It absorbs rainwater. It lasts up to 100 years. On the con side, it should be regraded every couple of years in order to keep it in its place and looking good. Another good choice is pavers. They are permeable, especially if sand or small stones are used in between the pavers themselves. They can last up to 100 years. There is a program called Rain Check Rebate. Citizens could get up to $4,000 if they install according to those guidelines. Now, why does all this matter? It matters because of the river. The second paper I gave you has a little picture of creatures at the bottom that are affected by runoff, and the three main points are water quantity. When it rains hard, a lot of flooding occurs, and debris and sediment erosion all washes down into the river. It stresses the inhabitants there and kills them. Second one is water quality. All the stuff that people put on their lawns, all the fertilizer, pesticides, herbicides, gasoline, oil, anything that's on the street, it all rushes down to the river, and it accumulates on impervious surfaces such as concrete and asphalt. Also messes with the inhabitants of the river. And the last point is water temperature. This was something I didn't know, but rain on impervious surfaces is hotter. on impervious surfaces such as concrete and asphalt, also messes with the inhabitants of the river. And the last point is water temperature. This was something I didn't know, but rain on impervious surfaces is hotter, and it can stress and kill river inhabitants. I see a lot of folks down there fishing and enjoying the river, and the more we can do to encourage nature, nature's abundance, we should do. So, I would, I would just like to see gravel and pavers promoted where they can be. I know it's not, it's not practical everywhere. Concrete and asphalt have their places, but if you have a flat driveway, there's really no reason that you couldn't have the alternative of gravel or pavers and get that rain check rebate. And I would just like to recommend that we have some system in place when people come to replace their driveways, they are notified about the rain check rebate program and encouraged to use surfaces that will absorb rainwater. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyer. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item?
Mr. Smalls, if no one else speaks, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Love, why is gravel prohibited?
Prohibited? The city has been moving towards that for a number of years now. Some of the reasons we had were the spillage into the street, they're clogging up the, they're clogging up the storm drains, there's safety towards pedestrians and so forth who go by, damaged vehicles. Plus, a lot of times, it is, as Ms. Dyer said, you have to keep it up when you're doing it. It's, if not, it's going to become infested with weeds, it becomes basically a dirt mound at that point. Now, I understand that certain people may, you know, actually, you know, maintain, like, like Ms. Dyer said, that, you know, maintain it, but a lot of times, they end up, it's one and done, and these become just kind of dirt mounds and grass fields as opposed to actual driveways.
And who made that determination? Your department? Did your department prohibit it? Did they make the determination that gravel's bad based on those, those reasons?
Well, we spoke with all through city staff to figure out what it was. Like I said, they've been moving towards this for a number of years. You actually can't do it except within the Historic District Commission. You can't put down, if you don't have gravel now, you can't do it. That's all, that was already determined in 20-6.18 of the code.
And, and did, did the council before me vote on that, or did? I don't understand why you're saying it's been in, it's in, been in the motion of prohibiting it to be put down. I put three tons of gravel in the alley next to me. I don't put, if I put it near, if I put it near a sidewalk, I made sure that it was packed down really, really well, and that it was a, it was a bigger portion of the gravel in that section, and it, I haven't had one stone come off onto the sidewalk. And it also has eliminated a lot, a lot of standing water in my alley, which is eventually going to prohibit mosquitoes from popu-- getting populated or getting worse in my alley. And I notice when it rains now that the gravel, because the sun heats it, the gravel, as soon as that rain hits it, boy, it dries up right away. I don't get where, where you would find examples of, other than, I have reported a couple sections of sidewalks where the gravel has gotten onto sidewalks. That's just because it hasn't been maintained in years and years and years and years. So, I don't see when you got a material that will last 100 years, and I understand that you have to, any, anything requires a little bit of maintenance on it, it's going to last 100 years as long as, and it's very, very cheap, too. Mine costs like $45 to get three tons of it. It's not very expensive at all, not like concrete, not like asphalt, and if it's going to be better for the environment, I, I don't see why we prohibit it in the historic district.
Councilman DeWalt? I'm going to ask that the council consider moving this agenda item forward with the direction to our, our planning staff to take a closer look at our standards regarding gravel and the use of gravel and look to amend this ordinance in order to, to include gravel as one of the pervious surfaces that we allow.
Mr. President, if I could, I believe that it's already prohibited in the Historic District Guidelines, were adopted many, many years ago. That's part of the problem.
What it, and what it did was it had, actually, it said it was discouraged, and that wasn't prohibited, but it was discouraged was the wording.
Discouraged, that's correct. I'm sorry. But those were adopted years and years and years ago, many years before me.
Discouraged is totally different than prohibited.
I'm sorry.
Discouraged is totally different definition than prohibited.
I'm not addressing you, Mr. DeWalt.
All right, I'm just, I'm just making a comment.
Well, you go ahead and wait till I'm finished, then you can make a comment.
I will, then.
Thank you. Okay, so it was adopted, it was adopted discouraged in the historic, many years before I got involved. Okay, and I believe that that discussion took place after a discussion with Public Works. Not just jamming up the, the stones roll out, they roll down into the, into the inflows into the water and sewer systems, or they get caught on the street. They're just laying in the street. So, again, I don't know all the ins and outs of, of gravel. I know a bit about seashells because I grew up on Long Island, and I used to use seashells, but they stopped doing that for a lot of reasons. So, again, I think that Mr. Smalls made a legitimate point that maybe needs to be further looked at, but we'd have to revise other parts of the, of the standard, correct? The way I read it. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmen Leirs.
Can I speak, Mr. Smalls?
Absolutely.
Sometimes ordinances and laws and whatever it is in the city charter, sometimes it gets outdated and we have to revisit them. The date that that was made, maybe it was 30, 40 years ago, just like the, the problems that we're having with our alleys, it's been going on for 30 to 40 years, and nobody has rectified it. Sooner or later, you have to revisit these things, and you have to make a honest judgment for it. Everything I read about in this article about gravel is pretty positive, and maybe those concerns are a lot outdated and it needs to be revised because it's, it's so old. Thank you.
Again, counsel, I'm going to, to raise the point that there are parts of ordinance 1945 that are very positive and very constructive. I'm asking that the administration take a look at the gravel portion of this ordinance and...
Yeah, let me...
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
Let me, just a couple comments here. That's exactly what the administration is trying to do. This goes back to when Mike McGlocken was doing his driveway. We had some concerns, it's a couple years ago. We've been trying to update the code. There's a lot of new products out there that we can, that we can use. There's also a courtesy to the Historical District Commission that we must follow and use, its third guidelines and have their input. The other thing, the administration, I would not lock us into just gravel. I think there's other things that need to be looked at. The other thing is, we have five different opinions up here. When we were talking about tourist homes, Mr. DeWalt, you want it, no gravel. So, those are things that I've got to weigh and make sure that we change, or if we change something, it could affect the other, you know, that other policy that we've approved. So, you know, those are things that I'm going to need input from each of the council members here because as we move forward, we're, we're fine moving forward. We are trying to do more things that are more environmental and friendly, that they can get grants, all of those things, but I would encourage all of you all to please send us your information on what you would like. We'd like for you to move forward because I think this is still a good piece of legislation, but there are people and commissions and others that we need to talk to as well as get your input as we move forward with this. Because, again, I don't want to do something that is, you all are absolutely opposed to, but we'll move forward, but this is still, I think, a good piece to, to move forward with.
I agree, Mayor. Councilmen Leirs?
Yeah, let me just, when you look at that, I mean, I spent a lot of time with the issue of pervious concrete, and that seems to have disappeared off the radar over the last year, both at National League of Cities, and I think at MML, they had a couple of displays talking about that. I'm not, I'm not going to talk about the pervious blacktop because the difficulty with blacktop, it has, is an oil-based product, majority of it, that leaches out of the, out of the material. But they did have a discussion about pervious concrete, and, and while there is, in fact, some issue with the, with the cement, there's other products that they were using to overcome that. I just asked that you look, if we're going to postpone this, Mr. Love. Thank you.
We want to move forward on this tonight, and we will bring back the, this has nothing to do with gravel and everything else, so we'll move fo-- we'd like for you to move forward with this, and then we'll bring the other pieces back with council input as well.
All right. So, counsel, I will entertain a motion to move forward with this with the direction that our administration will take a further look at not only gravel, but other pervious surfaces to be used in driveways and parking pads, et cetera. Yes, yeah, yeah.
Mr. President, I move, I move to approve this as presented.
As presented?
As presented.
Okay. There's a motion to approve as presented. Is there a second?
Mr. President, you did make a motion yourself to move forward with this?
To move forward with this with direction that the administration...
With direction.
Is that...
Yeah, that's post, post, this action we're taking.
Okay.
Did you want a second, Mr. President?
I'll second, I'll second, Mr. President's motion.
Thank you. So, so to avoid confusion, what we are, are going to, what's before us with a motion and a second, is to move forward with the agenda item as presented with the direction that the administration will take a further look at pervious surfaces to include gravel, et cetera. Did I frame that correctly, Ms. Ralph?
Yes, sir, you did.
Sounds good.
Very good. So, with that, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, would you please call a roll?
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
No, but yes, with the amendment.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Oh, yes, but to look further at the gravel options.
Yes.
Mayor Mel?
I'll definitely concur.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Love. Agenda item 7D is introduction to first public hearing on ordinance number 1946, an ordinance to amend the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. I read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:06. Ms. Sailor?
Mr. President, as I presented at the work session, ordinance 1946 creates a retention and recruitment reserve of $150,000 from the unassigned fund balance, as well as makes adjustments to revenue and expenditure budget line items based on actual year-to-date receipts and expenditures. The overall net change to the operating budget is a decrease of $477,700. There's an increase to the capital improvement program of $2,300 for the cable studio equipment and set improvements based on the receipts of the Laurel TV membership program.
Thank you, Ms. Sailor. I have no one else signed up to speak. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Can I make a comment, Mr. Smalls?
Yes, sir.
Just for the people in the audience and who are watching TV, this $150 is for retention and recruitment, mainly for police officers, because at the current time, we are 11 police officers down in, in the workforce right now. So, this is...
$1,000.
What's that?
$150,000.
I mean, $150,000. And this is for the, because we are 11 police officers down right now in the police department. This is for some incentives for retention and recruitment-wise, just so you're aware of that.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. If there's no one else wishing to speak, I will close the public hearing at 7:08. Second public hearing with possible action will be held on Monday, July 22, 2019, at the Mayor and City Council meeting starting at 6 o'clock PM. Is there any other business to come before the Mayor and City Council? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good job.